Board of County Commissioners for Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. Our invocation this morning will be given by Joshua Hobbs from the Church of the Heights, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Commissioner Goddard, Mr. Hobbs. Mr. Hobbs, you're on mute, sir.
I apologize. I thought I had it straight. All right, let us pray. Lord, I thank you for letting me be a part of community that still believes in you, one that acknowledges your divine nature, even when we recite our national pledge, where the model of morality that guides a people comes from your word, where the rule of law is not only observed, protected, but even enforced, a community that follows the example of Christ by loving our neighbor. Lord, being a citizen of Putnam County, I submit to and I lift up my leaders in prayer. I pray that they may have wisdom today, not just intellectual or educational, not just emotional or even political, but, Lord, wisdom that takes account all things and then seeks you for guidance to do what is righteous. Lord, I pray that you give them strength today to be able to stand up for what is right, to follow through with decisions that have been made, and for the guidance and wisdom that you give them. Lord, I pray, ask a blessing over my leaders, over their health. I ask, Lord, for you to keep them safe. Lord, I pray over their families. I know that being in this office or this position can be time-consuming and demanding, which can take its toll on the family as well. So, Lord, I pray that you would bless the entire family. But I ask that you bring our community into unity, and that these men and women will lead us into that peace, not only with each other, but peace with you. Lord, I ask for your anointing over all of today's proceedings. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs, and thank you, Commissioner Goddard. The chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes listed on the agenda under item-
I move for a motion of approval.
Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Goddard and a second by Commissioner Rawls for approval of the minutes listed on the agenda. Is there any further discussion?
A point of order that was actually Commissioner Harvey that seconded.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Harvey seconded it. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to public comment. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters into the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the board has received no prior information as of part of the agenda. I don't know that we have any public comment this morning. Is there anybody on this call that would like to make public comment? We have no one in the waiting room. Okay, seeing as though we do not at this point, we're going to move forward to the solid waste collection and disposal district. I have to recess this meeting, but it's a time certain at 9:10. So, I think what we're going to do is we're going to move on to item five and five A, which is the presentation by the county administrator, Mr. Suggs.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If you could just give me one minute, I don't see my folks in the room. They've been notified. They should be here at any minute now. So, matter of fact, one's walking in now. So, I guess we're ready to go. If you'll, I'm going to step down to the podium, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, and make a quick presentation.
I don't know that we have a camera to catch you down there, Terry.
I was hoping we did. I spoke to Jacob yesterday. I think we do. Jacob, are you going to be able to answer me at the podium? All right.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. Just wanted to do this. I was contacted last week by Mr. Wayne, who was a part of your fire committee. I had been meeting here for several meetings at Dura West, and I want to say thank you for that, because I think what come after that meeting was a great report. I think this gives us some opportunity to move forward in our fire services division. It's a very positive place, and I want to make sure that we get the credit today as they're with your committees. I want to say thank you publicly for that. But we're here this morning to take the opportunity to recognize two individuals for outstanding work during that time. So, this morning, I would like to thank you for your commitment. It was your choice, your chair, that you were a fire committee. So, Jim, on behalf of the fire committee, I'm going to present you a practice one as a representative of your role. Be grateful appreciation for your outstanding service. You're within about 100 fire committee.
Thank you so much for doing what you did. I read the reports. I saw the meetings, how they were facilitated. I think they were ran extremely well. I got nothing but positive comments back from the committee themselves. And this is a representation of your work that the committee wanted to make sure that you had. So, this comes from the committee. And so, this morning, there'll be some comments that will be made just shortly. But if I can, Mr. Chairman, I got one more. Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you want me to start? This was one more tricky. I had to make Jacob, since he was in the business, one while, and nobody was there. So, I hope I didn't get him out of the secret. Again, Jacob, not only what you do for us here at the B O C C and the town conference, but this also comes from your body. We wanted to thank you personally for all you did to make sure that your meetings are here, Zoom meetings, two-two availability, and comment sections. So, again, on behalf of the Public County Fire Rescue Committee, to check everything. So, I'd say it.
That's it.
All right. Be grateful appreciation for your outstanding service and dedication. So, again, thank you so much for all the meetings you're here. And you watch your progress. A lot, so much. Absolutely. Now, I think I have to go back to your computers. I believe there's some folks that are going to be able to send those wonderful fire committee and type them in comments. And Jim, we love to consider that. So, thanks a lot. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for helping to do that.
Good.
Thank you.
Terry, you on mute there?
Yes, sir.
Jacob, are you, have you got us separated back there where we won't reverb? Okay, good deal. We'll carry on then. We're still a minute shy of being able to go into our solid waste collection and disposal district. Okay, Wayne, did you have a comment this morning, sir?
Yeah, I just wanted to, first of all, I wanted to thank Terry Suggs for putting that together for us. It was a little awkward. We wanted to do it, Jim and Jacob, in person, but because of COVID, we could not. And, but the committee overall just wanted to thank both of you for your hard work that went beyond the norm to put this together. And Commissioners, we thank you for putting this fire task force together, and we stand ready to assist the commission going forward for implementation as you see fit. But again, thank you, Jacob and Jim. Y'all did a great job. And I want to thank also the union, the volunteer professional firefighters who came together to make this happen.
Mr. Perry, did you want to add anything to that, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to voice what Wayne said, that Jim Toriano was a terrific mediator, kept us on course, and I think we came out with a good product. And personally, I'd like to thank you, Chairman Turner and Administrator Suggs, for the opportunity to serve on this committee. And I hope everyone has a very nice day, and thank you again.
Thank you for that. The, was any of the committee members wanting to speak on this issue before I did? Hearing none, I would just like to take this opportunity again to not only thank Jim and not only thank Jacob, but to thank all the committee members who sat aside any differences that they may had and came and tried to come up with a plan that's best for Putnam County. I look forward to trying to implement this plan at the best rate that we can when our new fire executive director, Fire Services, is on board. So, with that being said, it's 9/11 now. We're going to move on to, I'm going to recess the Board of County Commission meeting, and I'm going to convene the solid waste collection and disposal district meeting. Matt, are you on board with us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Matt, was there a reason that you wanted this to come back before, even though we had already read it once? Does it take two readings? Is that the reason this before us this morning?
Yes, that's what this is. This is an actual approval of the assessment role. What we talked about before was the rates for the year. So, approving this is the actual role that comes from the property appraiser.
Okay. And so, we need a motion to approve the solid waste collection and to implement the waste rate resolution. Is that it?
It's to approve the assessment role. Hang on just a second. Let me try to find-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
We need to approve the minutes first. So, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 28 solid waste collection and disposal district.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Goddard to approve the minutes of the solid waste collection and disposal district listed on the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Harvey. I always say that I need a little supervision from time to time. With that being said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, what we need, Matt, a motion to-
Accept and approve the special assessment role for implementation for the rates that were set forth in the previous resolution. This one is, it doesn't have a resolution. It just needs a motion to accept and approve the role that is-
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Harvey?
I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve the special assessment role for implementation of the fiscal year 2021 solid waste rate resolution.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Goddard to approve the solid waste rate resolution. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'm going to adjourn the solid waste collection and disposal district and reconvene the county commission meeting, at which time I'm going to ask Ms. Young if she would give us her presentation on the countywide projects update.
Morning, Commissioner. Thank you. Just to reiterate, the project update presentation is meant to provide the commission and the public an update on a handful of projects which-
Mr. Chairman?
We can't hear you, Ms. Young. No, it's still pretty dim. You might need to go to audio settings and turn up your volume on your microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, barely. It's a little better.
I have IT support here now, so hopefully you will get a little bit better coverage shortly.
That's better.
Excellent. Just to reiterate, the project update presentation is meant to provide the commission and the public an update on a handful of projects which-
That's much better.
-are of interest to the commission, our citizens, or administration. The project list is not intended to be an all-inclusive list of every project or initiative underway by all county departments. If there's a particular question on a project, please feel free to reach out to me, and I'll be sure to provide you an update. We're going to start off today with reviewing the projects by the administration. We have the strategic plan project underway. The report from the two-day planning workshop has been disseminated. The mission, vision, and value statements have been established. The employee survey results have been disseminated and reviewed. The strategic operational plans and goal metrics have been drafted and are being reviewed by the consultant. The 14 priority objectives identified by the B O C C have been assigned to a team lead and are being operationalized to develop actionable metrics. The administration also has the census underway. As of 8/14/2020, Putnam County has a 50.5% response rate. The state average response rate is 60.4%, and the national average response rate is 63.6%. Administration also has the CARES Act Business Assistance Program ongoing. The B O C C approved the Business Assistance Program on 7/24/20, and the online application went live on 8/10/2020. The animal control facility project, the B O C C discussed conceptual floor plans at the June workshop. Revisions were requested and have been completed. Ms. Suarez presented the new draft to the Animal Control Advisory Committee last night, Monday, August 24. The cat area was approved. Work on the kennel portion was requested and is being reviewed by Ms. Suarez. Ms. Suarez is also working with our Public Works Department to get a survey of the land completed. The library is undertaking a Melrose Library expansion project. Final review of construction documents have been approved, and the architect is drafting the documents needed for the bid cycle. The bid for construction is expected to be ready in September of 2020. The Parks and Recreation Department has the project play and splash pad, which we're happy to report the project is complete. The ribbon cutting was held on August 12, and the park is open for play. Parks and Recreation also has a Georgetown Park project. The pavilion playground and picnic table installations are complete. We are still exploring options of a boat ramp location and working with the water management to determine appropriate areas. Parks and Recreation has the Flora Home Park Historic Building Project underway. The Flora Home Historic Association is raising funds to complete the clubhouse renovations. The county has completed the removal of the concrete slab as agreed upon. The Flora Home Parks Association expects the clubhouse renovation to begin work in sometime in February. It is unknown how long it will work, because they are utilizing volunteers for some assistance. They have submitted and received their demolition permit. The Planning Department has the comprehensive plan project underway. Public workshops continue to be held to obtain input from residents, landowners, and interested parties on the existing comp plan, what is working, what is not working, and how the comp plan can be changed to better benefit Putnam County. A public workshop was held on August 20, and another is scheduled to be held this evening, August 25, at 6:00 p.m. In addition, staff is taking input via email and phone calls. The Planning Commission has completed a first review of goals, objectives, and policies on all nine elements of the plan. The Planning Commission will begin discussion of an initial markup version of the comp plan with proposed changes to the goals, objectives, and policies at a special meeting on August 26. Proposed changes to the future land use map are being drafted by staff and will be submitted to the Planning Commission for review. The Planning Department also has the Citizen Serve Online Permitting Project. Internal and external teams meet weekly to review and to complete implementation of models. We are currently implementing the billing permit permitting section or module, specifically permit fees. We also have already in implementation the phases for building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, and contract license modules. Public Works Departments has several projects, the first of which is Dirt to Pave 2019. That project is complete. The Main Street Sidewalk Construction in Crescent City, the construction is underway. Construction to date has grown to roughly 70% completion. We're still at an estimated completion date by or before October 2020. The Fort Gates Ferry Landing, Mr. Roberts is leading this project. FDEP permit has been revised successfully. The Army Corps of Engineer permit is still pending revisions. Pile load calculations are needed for FDOT. Mr. Roberts has engaged Ms. Baker, an engineer, to stamp the plans for final load calculations, and we expect that to take roughly 30 days to complete the work. Public Works has the Ashley Lake and Phase One of that project. The construction is complete. The Barden Bridge design is complete. FDOT review is reviewing the plans, and action to secure the right-of-way is on the B O C C consent agenda for today. We're working to GIS map the mowing and grading equipment of Public Works. Public Works and IT are still working on piloting devices on various pieces of equipment. They're working on gathering data on test equipment. And once we have the system operational, IT and Public Works, estimated it'll be a 45-day implementation frame to fully be engaged. Lake Susan Road, Phase Two, the design is underway. Design plans are 90% complete of design engineering and have been submitted for review. The construction schedule is still to begin in December of 2020, and project completion is still estimated to be June of 2022. St. John's Avenue resurfacing, Palm Avenue, CSX crossing to the Blacka Fire Department. Design is underway. 60% plans, design plans have been, will be submitted by the end of August 2020. Road resurfacing project, the construction is underway. Completed roads are in quality control phase. The last remaining construction includes Baker's Acres Road and Baker's Acres Drive, which are anticipated to start this week. The East Blacka wastewater treatment plant expansion, the construction is complete, and we are in the quality control phase to close that project out. County Road 310 Bridge Rehabilitation, the contract for design services has been awarded. Public Works is reviewing the project's scope and design options relative to funding limitations. They expect present for discussion at the September 8, 2020 workshop. The Dirt to Pave 2020 is being, draft is being finalized, and it's expected to be released to the public by the end of August 2020. County Road 315 Crosswalk, the construction has been completed. Communication is ongoing with the Putnam County Sheriff's Office and the Putnam County School District to see about appointing a crossing guard. The East Blacka Drainage and Flooding Mitigation Project, an amendment to that agreement to allow work in critical areas located on state property and to increase the funding and a time extension is being presented to the B O C C today. The bid package is in progress. We are drafting that. We've received 39% of all 118 TCEs required to work on this project. We've received letter of no objection from the Florida Department of Corrections for work on their project, completing the application to the TIFT for their approval work at state property. The St. John's Avenue Drainage Improvement from State Road 19 to County Road 309C, design is underway, and it's 60% complete. The county review is scheduled for September 17, 2020, and we plan to advertise for construction in November of 2020. The St. John's Avenue Bike Trail, Beston Smith Civil Services was awarded the contract. Design is underway, and Public Works has completed the required survey for design. Road Restriping and Pavement Marking Project for fiscal year 20. We issued a bid, but the submittals were far above budget. The project is to be resolicited in August of 2020. The Sanitation Department has a self-for-a construction project underway. Contract for services has been executed for the design work. The design work is still in progress. Communications with DEP regarding discussions of options to provide the value-add alternatives to the original schematic design is underway. Additional conversations are being explored to allow permitting of a borrow pit that would allow us to use onsite soils as long as they meet specifications. We expect to start construction in the fourth quarter of 2020, and we expect construction to take roughly six months to complete. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there any questions of that report from the Commissioners?
Awesome.
Okay, hearing none, we're going to move to the item six on the, which is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that Commissioners wish to pull? And I'll start with Commissioner Rawls. Commissioner Rawls?
I'm sorry, it's muted. I have none.
Okay, Commissioner Goddard?
I have none.
Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have none, sir.
And I have none. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Harvey?
I make a motion that the board pass consent agenda items A through N.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Pickens to approve the consent agenda, items A through N. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. With that, we're going to move on to item seven, which is a fine reduction request by Vanderbilt Mortgage. And I'm going to turn that, Jim, are you taking that, or who has taken that one?
We have that, Commissioner.
Okay, I'm looking for you on my screen, John. Go ahead, John. I don't see you on the screen, but y'all go ahead. Oh, now I do. Go ahead. Thank you, sir.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Thomas.
The address is 246 Whirlwind Loop, Hawthorne, Florida. And the new property owner's names are Vanderbilt Mortgage and Finance. The violation was care premises. The original fine amount, $46,652. Total cost of enforcement action is $1,851. The new owner took over the property in a foreclosure sale and was unaware of the violations. The property is not compliant, and he is requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves the fine reduction, the Code Enforcement Department recommends the fine to be paid within 90 days.
Okay, committed, what is the will of the commission?
Don't we have to have public comment?
Yes, sir. I was just wondering, do you have any questions of staff first?
Mr. Chairman, I do. Mr. Chairman, I do.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey.
You know, again, we're getting letters from people that they didn't know these fines existed. This is from an attorney who says he didn't know this fine existed. How can we make our fines more prevalent, let me say that, or more aware, more awareness on our fines that when they buy these or foreclose, they see it? I mean, we hear it every time we meet, and I don't know how we accomplish that.
I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Harvey, but under the program that Commissioner Goddard started a couple of years ago, we were trying to get all these properties that would normally come back to the county, and this was exactly the one because the property's not, probably not worth that amount of money. And so it would come back to the county, and then we would have to turn around and sell the property. This way, it was bought under either tax deed or foreclosure or whatever the deal is, and we're able to keep the property out on the tax rolls by doing it. And we're remaining consistent also in getting the property cleaned up and then doing the fine reduction, which is what we've been doing. And I think the program in general may need a little tweaking in the future, but I believe that we're doing exactly what we intended to do when we started out. Just my opinion, Commissioner. Commissioner Rawls, yes, sir.
So when, when these fines are put in place, is there a physical lien that's recorded in the courthouse along with the fine?
Not always, Commissioner. I think it depends on if they've actually filed the lien or not. Some have and some haven't. Some may just, some may just be running fines.
Yeah, that might explain, answer the question, Mr. Harvey. That was all.
Right, yes, sir. So anyhow, I'm going to open it up for a public comment on this. Mr. Ruff, did you want to say something today, sir? I'll see you on our call.
Good morning Commissioners. Yes, sir, I represent Vanderbilt Mortgage and Finance. I've spoken to Mr. Moore, and Vanderbilt is willing, we appreciate the reduction, and we would accept same, the settlement, if you will, the offer as presented by Mr. Moore for 90 days of payments of the fine. And I guess if it may help clear some things up, the fines had accrued, from my look at the violation and its history, the fines had accrued over several years by the former owner of the property, who was our mortgager, who was Vanderbilt's mortgager. Vanderbilt held the mortgage on the property. The property went into foreclosure, we foreclosed. There were no bidders at the foreclosure sale, and Vanderbilt took title out of the foreclosure sale in January of this year. By March of this year, the county code enforcement had re-inspected the property, had seen that Vanderbilt had brought the property into compliance within the two months of our taking title. And so we think it's very fair and equitable that the fine be reduced, given that Vanderbilt was not responsible for the fines. And I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Harvey.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the settlement of 1851 if it's paid within 90 days.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, yeah, Commissioner Goddard.
I would. You know, I understand everything that, you know, how this is, but we have in the past, and because they did get this in compliance, we usually drop the administrative monthly pay payment, which is $750. I'd like to see it drop down to $1,101, just to stay in consistency of what we've been doing.
Commissioner Garder, at this point, you can ask if that would, or you could make an amendment to the motion, unless they decide to change a motion, that amendment would be appropriate.
Okay, well, I'll ask for an amendment.
Do we have a second to the amendment? Okay, the amendment to the motion dies for lack of a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. $1,851 to be paid within 90 days. With that, I'm going to go to item eight and ask if the clerk of court has any comments for us this morning. Mr. Smith.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, we have no items today, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next on the list of appointments, I'd like to start by offering a nomination for the zoning board of adjustment at-large position of Eddie Collins resignation for Ed Kilibrue. I talked to Ed yesterday, and he said he would be willing to do this, so I'm going to need, I probably should, with me being sitting in the chair, I should probably have a nomination from a commissioner, I would think.
I'd move to nominate Ed for that.
Okay. Got a nomination by Commissioner Rawls and a second by Commissioner Harvey for Ed Kilibrue to move to go on to the ZBOA. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. I don't have any further ones myself at the moment. Excuse me just a second Commissioners. Okay, Jacob, you can go ahead and let them in, that's fine. We have some people in the waiting room, okay. The, is there any further appointments? Commissioner Goddard?
No.
Commissioner Pickens?
I don't have any, but I did have a question on Mr. Kilibrue's appointment. Would he, is he filling in for the remainder of Eddie's term? Is that what I understood, and how long is that?
Yes, sir, it's up until December 31st, 2022, is when, and he's filling in for the rest of Collins, that's correct, sir.
Yeah, I think it's an excellent choice.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, is there any appointments? Commissioner Harvey?
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Rawls?
I have none.
Okay, and I have none further. So with that, we're going to move on to the comments. Is there any comments from the county attorney, Colonel Commando? Are you with us? I'm looking at, I'm looking for you.
There's a lot of people on the screen this morning, but I just wanted to let y'all know that I'm still working on the shipbuilding. We sent out an email to Mr. Gano and asked him if he had any kind of comments he wanted to solicit, but I should have a draft for y'all to review very shortly, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Next is the county administrators' comments.
Just a couple this morning. Mr. Chairman, again, just want to say congratulations to Jim and Jacob for their, for their recognition this morning. It's a pleasure to work with folks like that. And Mr. Chairman, that will conclude my comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Suggs. And we'll move into commissioner requests. I'm going to start with Commissioner Goddard this morning.
Well, I don't really have a request. I'm just going to say, you know, congratulations to Mr. Adamsack for replacing me in the next, next term. And also I'm going to put kudos to Mr. Adamsack. He's pledged to contribute half of his salary to, you know, organizations that don't normally have that money, such as Placa Christian Service Centers. I got to give him kudos for that. That's, that's very admirable. That's all I have.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Goddard. Commissioner Rawls?
I just have one request of staff. We can get an update on the fire EMS committee's report. They've had it out there for several weeks, want to know what the status is, what we do in moving that forward.
I can help with that if you don't mind, and I'm sure that Mr. Suggs and Ms. Young can chime in if they please, but I, I think what they've been waiting on is they've been waiting to, to get a administrator for the fire and EMS onboard. I understand they're real close to maybe getting that done, and that person is going to be responsible along with staff to try and get the, as many recommendations that came from that committee done, and that they're trying to reorganize the, the fire and EMS to, to try and get as much as what was recommended from the committee. So I think they are making, making steps forward, and I think that we'll, by the next meeting, we should have some very good news.
One other question, have we staffed the full-time engine in East Placa yet?
I couldn't answer that, Commissioner.
Anybody?
Well, I don't know. I don't know who to send that to.
No, we haven't.
That's why I just had somebody sent me a question yesterday regarding that, so that is my question.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Turner. I just want to echo what Administrator Suggs said, congratulations to Jim Toronto and Jacob for the recognition, and also all the members who've served on that Fire Services Committee and Wayne Plank, and Mike Perry, I just thank you for your service to Putnam County. I just have one, one thing to bring before the board. As you remember, back in June 15th, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee voted and made the recommendation to the board to open up our parks, facilities for user groups such as organized youth athletics. So we've been doing that. Yesterday at 4 o'clock, Kevin Stevens, Director of Parks and Recs, Administrator Suggs, Julianne Holmes Young and myself met yesterday to discuss the possibility of a modified soccer, or really soccer instructional season. And I will ask Kevin to come on and explain that, how that would work, so we wanted to run that by the board. Didn't feel it needed to go by the Recreation Advisory Committee because we had already voted to open that park for such activities. So I'd like to call on Kevin to explain how that would work if Kevin's on board with us now.
Yeah, I see Kevin. Kevin, unmute please, sir.
Yes, sir.
Did you hear the request from Commissioner Pickens?
Kevin, can you give us just kind of a rundown on, on your plan that you presented to Administrator Suggs and Julianne and myself yesterday? Modified, really a soccer instructional league that would be held at the Deboe Park and then the sports complex in South Putnam.
Yes, sir. What we'll do is we're going to set it up to where we, we have the same age groups, the four to six, the seven to nine, and 10 to 12 age groups, and we're going to have the fields set up, basically corners or certain portions of the field, so that the kids will be able to come out and conduct round robin type training. There will be no, no games for the season at all. This is an instructional clinic type season. So during the registration process, we'll take 10 kids per team, and that way we can stay within that 10-person limit, and then have a coach per each team. And then just for example, Monday night, all the four to six little kids will come out to the sports complex, and they will meet at one of these stations, Station One, Station Two, Station Three, like that. Each station will be manned by a different coach. That first group of kids will go to that particular station. They'll practice that particular skill at that station for 10 to 15 minutes, whatever time limit we have set up. We'll blow a whistle, let everybody know to rotate, and then that group of kids will rotate from Station One to Station Two and then Station Three, and that same group of 10 kids will stay together. They don't intermingle or mix with other kids at all. They stay as their single team, and they move throughout the entire field in that process. Then Tuesday night, we would do a different age group, Thursday night, a different age group, and we'll do that for about four weeks up until the Thanksgiving holiday.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Commissioner Pickens, is this something you're for, sir, as Chairman of Parks and Rec?
Yes, I am. After listening to Kevin and discussing it with Administrator Suggs and Julianne, feel that, you know, opening up for some type of activity for the, I agree with that. I am in agreement of no actual contact games, but having this kind of in the different corners, you could see in the illustration that Kevin had it make it a little easier, but they would be in corners of the particular fields, and then would do drills and then switch, so, and, and I don't think he mentioned the same, if your group of 10, you would stay with that group of 10 through the whole four weeks. You would not be jumping from one team to the other. So, and I think with the other guidelines that he'll have in place and safety precautions, I think this would be a positive, positive thing for Putnam County.
I don't think we need a motion to do this. I think we can do it from consensus. Do the commissioners have any problem? I'm good. Commissioner Goddard, Harvey, Commissioner Rawls, everybody's good by consensus. Commissioner Pickens and Kevin, please proceed with your program.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have anything further for us this morning, Commissioner Pickens?
That's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Did you have any commissioner requests this morning?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to give the fire committee kudos for the job well done, and something that they really needed, something we really needed to see, and Jim and Jacob, and it's just Wayne and Mike, and just all the people that were involved, who spent a lot of time, a lot of effort to get that to us, and, you know, I'm looking forward to implementing that, or parts of that. Did have a request today by Daniel at Waste Pro. Daniel has asked for, they're trying to expand a operation, and he asked if we could write a letter that they're a good corporate citizen of Putnam County, and he has asked for that. So just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
Okay. Is there anything further, Commissioner Harvey, is that it?
That's it, sir, thank you.
Okay, no problem, thank you. I have nothing further this morning. I'd already thanked the fire committee, Jim, Wayne, and all the members of it, and previously, and so I don't mind echoing that, because it can't be said enough. They, and just one last thing before I adjourn the meeting is, when I went to Jim and asked him to moderate this committee, I absolutely told him it was a volunteer thing, that he did not have to do this as part of his job, and he couldn't wait fast enough to volunteer to try to help our, with the service to this county. So he wasn't required to do this, and I think that's, that just shows kudos to him, and same with Wayne, and the same with Mr. Perry. They didn't have to do this at all. They did it out of, because they love our community. So if there's no more being to come before the board today, I see no hands waving, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you for being with us this morning.
See you at 2:00.